We are on conduct of business, we are on item C.
Provide direction to staff regarding cannabis-related activities in the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. First of all, I just have a request from the City Clerk that if anybody does wish to speak on this item, please go ahead and fill out a speaker card if you wouldn't mind, so we can make sure that we capture anybody's comments. So we have basically three topics to discuss tonight. What has the city done to date with respect to cannabis? What have all the other governmental agencies that are relevant to the topic done? Federal government, state, county, and other cities? And last but not least, what are the city's options? And we're going to discuss those in some detail, but in short, there are in essence two with variations. So the first option is to continue the prohibition on cannabis-related activities. You've got a moratorium now that expires in October, we'll talk about that. The second option would be to allow some or all of those activities and decide how you want to regulate them. And so as part of that question, you'll need to answer the question of whether you want to impose regulatory fees on those activities for cost recovery. And you'll also want to discuss whether to tax those activities. And the first opportunity for you to do that is going to be at the 2019 election. On that election, you can also, if you wish, place other measures on the ballot such as advisory measures or regulatory measures, and we'll talk about that. So you may be pleased to know that I'm not going to go through the comprehensive 12-page staff report in detail. It's late, I'll assume you've read it, or if you haven't read it, you can. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. There's a lot of additional information in the staff report, both for you and for members of the public. There's a lot of information that isn't in the staff report. We actually tried to cull down this what looks like about a nine-inch sheaf of information into those 12 pages, and so while we've done our best, we're not perfect. So we might have left something out that you're interested in, and if so, please feel free to ask, but we'll discuss all of those things in some detail. All right, so just quickly, what has the city done with respect to cannabis? Well, in 2011, the first thing was that you adopted an ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana distribution facilities in the city, and that ordinance is on the books and has remained unchanged. In October of 2016, about a month before the November 2016 election, the City Council felt that it was possible that the voters of the state, and frankly, of the city, might vote in favor of Proposition 64. And so in order to keep all of their options open and make sure that there weren't cannabis facilities opened up in the city without city regulation or taxation, the city adopted a moratorium, an urgency moratorium, on all of the commercial activities associated with cannabis. And that was specifically in advance of the 2016 election. So in November of 2016, the Prop 64 did pass by about 57 to 43. And then in September of the following year, the City Council extended the moratorium for another year. Now, why did they do that? And the reason was that the City Council wanted us, staff, to study and explore all of the different options that were coming forward. They wanted us to report back to you about what was the federal government doing, what was the state doing, what were other cities doing, what were they doing about regulation, what were they doing about taxation, and all of those things. And the whole area of cannabis was in flux at that time, and to some degree, still is. So what staff has done for you in the interim is gone to a lot of different sources, received a lot of different information, tried to analyze as much of that information as possible, and provide you with the most comprehensive and informative report that we could. Of course, we haven't caught everything, we don't know what's happening in every single state, we don't know the details of every single cannabis program in other jurisdictions, but we do have enough information to give you some broad outlines. So that's what the city has done so far. All right, well, what has the federal government done? Well, the slide's pretty short, but it actually says a lot. The federal government has really done very little except to discourage in any way possible the distribution and commercialization of cannabis, both medical and otherwise. It's still scheduled as an illegal drug with no medical use, that's what the federal government says. They have opposed state efforts to legalize cannabis, and I think it's fair to say that they have provided uncertain guidance, if any guidance, to cities about what they can and can't do. They've left open the possibility of prosecution for federal crimes. And it's sort of interesting, just as an aside, that I've actually seen that in my own research, where individuals who are involved in the cannabis business, both in terms of consulting and otherwise, always have in the back of their mind the thought that somehow the federal government might prosecute them for something. And this goes to city officials, it goes to city employees who handle the money that cannabis producers bring in, it goes to consultants, it goes to attorneys who were involved in the business. Everybody seems to be slightly concerned, and I think that with the current administration, it's fair to say that that uncertainty is going to remain for at least another couple of years unless there's some major changes in Congress or otherwise. So that's the federal government backdrop. So against that backdrop, what has the state done? And we'll talk a little bit about this. So after Prop 64 passed, they created three agencies to come up with regulations to license cannabis facilities. And there's 19 different kinds of them, and those are sort of broadly classified, like distribution, like retail, so a storefront, like cultivation, which obviously is growing plants indoors, like testing, and manufacture. So there's all kinds of different licensing, and within all of those different areas, there's different kinds of classifications. And those are based on the size of the facility and what they're doing. So the state issues those licenses, but Proposition 64 said that cities retain full local control to either prohibit if they want, or to allow and regulate. So the state gave, did allow local control of cannabis, and so that's what you've done. You've taken that local control and adopted a moratorium which expires in October of this year. The other thing the state has done is adopted a couple of different laws to try to harmonize the medical and non-medical commercial cannabis operations. And it's a little complicated, because you might remember, medical started first, and then commercial came later. So there were regulations about medical, then there were regulations about commercial, and now they've tried to, they've worked on an effort to try to combine those regulations and to treat them similarly. There is one interesting difference, though, that from a revenue standpoint, the state says that you can't get any sales tax revenue from sales of medical cannabis. So they put that in a bit of a special category, and there may be other differences as time goes on. So what else has the state done? I think they've extensively studied the creation of a separate banking system, because this is one of the big roadblocks to the full commercialization of cannabis, not only in California, but in all of the other states that have tried this. So when we looked at Oregon, we looked at Maryland, we looked at Colorado, what we found in all of those states is that there are banks, including banks in California, that will handle cannabis transactions. They're just doing so at a risk to themselves and at high cost for their depositors. So for example, what those banks do is, so far, the federal government hasn't withdrawn or invalidated their FDIC insurance, which they could do, but they haven't, so they've kind of left them alone. But they're still required, the banks, to fill out all of the paperwork and regulatory compliance that are required of federally chartered banks. So there's suspicious activity reports, there are reports for money laundering, there are reports for terrorism, there's all kinds of things that these banks are required to do to comply with federal law and receive money from cannabis providers, in all doing so in this area of uncertainty with the prospect of some sort of uncertain federal prosecution that may or may not happen. And so I think it's fair to say that the cannabis businesses have tried to maintain as much compliance as possible by setting up separate corporations that you funnel the money through, so that the banks aren't directly working with the cannabis companies. It's all very complicated, but the bottom line is, there's still a great deal of uncertainty about the banking system. I think that ultimately, some state or states may be effective at setting up their own bank that then can be used. That hasn't happened yet anywhere, and it's going to require the federal government to approve of that. There was an interesting legal case in, I think it was Maryland, in which one of the banks, a local bank, sued the Federal Reserve in Maryland for failing to authorize its ability to work with cannabis businesses. And before the case went to trial, they settled, and the federal bank said, "Okay, sure, we'll let you do it," but only under this very restrictive set of conditions. So even banks that are doing this are, I think, facing regulatory compliance hurdles. So that's what's happened, basically, at the state level. All right, what is the county closer to home, what has the county of San Mateo done? So what they did is they held a couple of study sessions in 2016 and '17, wondering whether it would be possible for all of the cities on the peninsula, in San Mateo County, to get together and have some sort of coordinated approach. And what that would involve is not necessarily the county telling the cities what to do, but instead having the cities agree that whatever tax they might impose through a ballot measure wouldn't result in, I think, what everyone was fearing, which was a race to the bottom. In other words, City A adopts a 10% tax, City B says, "Well, we want the businesses more, we're going to make our tax 9%," the next one goes 8%, and so you would have a situation in which it would be a race to the bottom, and then the revenue would really be inconsistent. After some study for a year or two, the county, I think, determined that there really wasn't that much interest among the cities to do anything in a coordinated way. So they went ahead, and they do allow now the county in unincorporated areas limited commercial cultivation, and you'll see that on the chart that's attached to the staff report. All right, well, let's take a look at that chart. It's Attachment 1. We didn't put it up on the screen because it's way too small, much smaller than the chart that the folks for the aquatics that are put up. But I can basically summarize it for you. So there's eight cities out of the 20 that have adopted a permanent ban of some sort. Three of them, including San Bruno, had an interim ban. I just heard, just recently, a couple of hours ago, that Daily City approved cannabis facilities in the city, and I haven't seen their report or looked at the meeting yet, so I don't know what they're doing exactly. Couple are thinking about it, should we allow retail or not. One city said, "We don't want any of those things, we just want delivery." And then finally, we have six cities out of the 20 that have allowed various combinations of these activities, some cultivation, some manufacturing, some testing, some distribution, and so on. So that's what the cities have done on the peninsula. All right, let's take a look and see, what are the city's options? And as I mentioned at the beginning of the report, there are basically two. So the first one is to continue the prohibition that you've already adopted on cannabis activities. Well, what does that actually mean? So state law requires us to allow personal indoor cultivation of up to six plants, and our moratorium allows that, and any ordinance you might choose to adopt also has to allow that. The city could enact additional regulations on that if you wanted to. Cities really have stayed away from that. It's a difficult thing to regulate, you know, how many plants people are growing in their house, and, you know, whether they're watering them right, and all kinds of things, so they really stayed away from that sort of knock on the door and "can I come inside your house to see your cannabis plants?" The city could certainly adopt, between now and October, what we'll refer to as a permanent ordinance, and a permanent ordinance only is as permanent as the City Council wishes because it can be amended at any time. But what that ordinance would do is it would memorialize what's in your moratorium. In other words, it would ban all other cannabis activities that are not otherwise allowed by Proposition 64. And if the City Council were to do that, then that process should be completed by October 25th. That's when the moratorium expires. So what you'd need to do is introduce the ordinance at some point, and then have it adopted by September 25th, because it takes 30 days to go into effect. So that's option number one. All right, option number two is a little more complicated. So option number two is you could decide to allow some or all of the activities that are on this slide. You could say, for example, "We want you to look at retail in the city." "We want to look at delivery." "We want to allow cultivation in certain places." "We're interested in manufacturing." "We would like testing facilities." Or we would approve of a distribution center in the city for cannabis, maybe from other parts of the city. So when you're thinking about these options, one thing to consider is the fact that you'll need to allocate, I think, both staff and consultant resources to develop these regulations and then to implement them. So what does that mean? Well, obviously, in addition to time from our office, most cities that have done this have used professional outside consultants. We use Muni Services, and we've actually had a couple of conversations with them about what it involves in terms of coming up with regulatory schemes and estimating, how are you going to maximize your revenue from those different businesses? Because, for example, you can tax retail in one way, delivery perhaps in a different way, cultivation differently, manufacturing differently, there's all kinds of options depending upon which one of these particular activities you pick. So we'll probably need some assistance with that framework, and also to determine what the regulatory fee should be. So you can certainly direct us at the conclusion of the meeting that you'd like us to study some of these options and bring them back to you for some further discussion. And that would end up being in a zoning ordinance or in some other type of ordinance, which would then go to the Planning Commission and then the City Council for approval. Well, let's keep going along those lines and see what else we would need to do. So we did already talk about the imposition of fees for cost recovery. Well, what does that mean? Well, having cannabis businesses, I think, fairly universally accepted, is going to require some regulation and some regulatory scheme that city staff is going to need to enforce. And that enforcement is going to cost dollars and resources. So ideally, what you'd want, just as developers pay the city fees for their development, you would want the cannabis businesses to pay the city for the cost of enforcing the regulations that are specifically designed for their particular business. You can also consider, should we tax those activities? And a number of cities on the peninsula have decided to do exactly that. That does require a vote of the people, that vote has to occur at an election at which City Council members are on the ballot, and the first time that can happen is not this November, but next November in 2019. At that time, you could also choose, if you wished to, to place either an advisory measure or regulatory measure on the ballot. Well, what does that mean? So an advisory measure is you're asking the public, "What do you think about this?" It's not binding, but the City Council can use that for direction. It's important for those measures to be useful to the City Council, that they be well-defined. So you'd want to tell us how you would want to define those measures at a subsequent meeting, so that we could work on them and bring them back to you. Some cities have also put what I call a regulatory measure on the ballot. In other words, instead of the City Council adopting the zoning ordinance that says, "We want three retail facilities and we want them in these zoning districts," you leave that to a vote of the people. So one issue that we've heard from our expert consultants about that is that that actually is difficult to implement and reduces the discretion that the City Council has to adapt the ordinance to changing unforeseen circumstances, because that ordinance can only be amended by another vote of the people. So what we've heard from our consultants is that if you want to regulate cannabis, you should tell us what you want to regulate. Let us and the experts come up with a series of regulations, present those to you for review, and adopt those regulations, and then put a tax measure on the ballot. So that would be the sequence of events if you're interested in that. Finally, the other important thing, and it bears noting, that there's a little gap in time that you have to be concerned about. So remember, the moratorium that you have expires on October 25th, and you can't re-up that. So between October 25th and the November 2019 election, there is about a year's worth of time in which if you don't do anything before the 25th, then any business can come in, get a state license, and operate in San Bruno without complying with any zoning ordinance, without paying any taxes, without paying any regulatory fees. So I think the recommendation from staff is that if you are interested in looking at regulating, allowing some of these activities in the future, that you need to consider what you're going to do, because you can't get those online really before, too much before the 25th of October, and you certainly can't get a tax measure on the ballot before November of 2019. So you'll need to consider, what do you do in that interim period? And one possibility is to adopt an ordinance that bans it with the understanding or direction to staff that then you're going to reconsider amending that ordinance in the future before the 2019 election to allow and regulate certain of those activities. And that would give staff enough time to put all those regulations together, to put ballot measures together, and however you want to do it. And so finally, the last point is that it's important to note that all of this analysis really requires the City Council to tell staff what it is that they favor in terms of marijuana cannabis businesses in the city. And what our consultants have told us is that you should look at cannabis businesses not as a regular, stable source of funds to balance city budgets, but instead, if you're going to allow cannabis in the city anyway, if the community is in favor of allowing that, then you may as well tax it once it's here, rather than looking at it in the reverse way, which is, "How much money can we get from a cannabis facility, and let's see what we can have?" Because that sort of flips the conversation and puts out front the rather uncertain source of income. If you're only allowing a couple of cannabis businesses in the city, then you're really only depending, you're depending only on those businesses to be successful, to not go bankrupt, to operate within the confines of law, it's very difficult to know what's going to happen to those businesses. So you don't want to adopt them for the purpose of generating revenue, you want to allow them in certain zoning districts so you can control where they are, and then tax those businesses once they're there in operation. That's the advice that we're getting from our consultants. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If it's okay with council, I'd like to see if we can go to the speaker cards. They've been waiting a long time in case they need to get home. Please, Melissa.
Stephen Seymour.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for all of the work that was put into the presentation that was just delivered. It does seem fairly accurate information. One thing I would like to mention is, is our president has said that he will stay out of the business of cannabis and leave it up to the states. So while there is some ambiguity in whether or not the federal government will prosecute or get involved in this, it's not likely. Everything that's going on right now in our country points towards probably rescheduling, reclassifying THC. Most people in the industry today think that that's going to happen within the next two years, and that's the only thing that gets in the way of doing more research with THC, funding research with THC, and it's also what complicates the banking system. So we're moving towards reclassifying THC. I would like to kind of talk to you a little bit about, lead you through a little story here. I, about two weeks ago, I toured about 50, 60 farms up in Mendocino and Humboldt. In terms of licensing and becoming legal, there's a rush by all of those that are involved in this business right now to legalize, to get the permitting they need so that they can operate 100% legal. In terms of the banking, as was mentioned, there are already alternatives that many dispensaries today and delivery operations already take credit cards. There are companies who are, as you mentioned, allowing credit cards, and the rate that they charge is somewhere between 2.5% and 3%. So it's not, I mean, under normal circumstances, that sounds high, but for this business, it's not. I have been working with several people who are in the business, and I'll tell you one quick story. I know a delivery, a person who owns a delivery operation, they started about six months ago. By the end of the year, they're on pace to have slightly over $8 million in revenue. That $8 million is really the reason why I think this city should think about having cannabis within the city boundaries. That $8 million could be $500,000 in tax revenue. And we just spoke tonight about budget tort, about the budget, and the need to have other revenue sources. I think this is a great revenue source. I realize I'm over, and I'm not going to take those three minutes you just gave me. I'm almost done. You didn't talk about the Colorado issue. I brought flyers for everyone. There are lots of, there's lots of data about Colorado and what it's done and hasn't done, and a lot of what is out there is not accurate. I have, right here, it shows, this contradicts some of what's out there. This shows that there's actually a decrease in marijuana use by 12- and 17-year-olds in Colorado since it was legalized. So there's a lot of data out there that I think's flawed, and I'm almost done. You could go to Hafnun Bay, who already is going to put four amendments on there, I'm not sure how you referred to them, but they're not legal, but they're amendments to see what the public would like from the cannabis industry if you were to adopt bringing it into San Bruno. They already exist, you might go to Hafnun Bay and check out what they're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Barbara Larena. Barbara Larena, Clark Avenue. The FDA just recently approved the first marijuana-derived prescription medication available in the U.S. for seizures. However, it does not contain THC. THC is a hallucinogen. It is mind-altering, according to the federal government. The marijuana we're discussing to legalize in San Bruno has THC in it. It is not going to be taken out. This leads me to the argument I hear so often. People tell me, "We have so many liquor stores in San Bruno, we need marijuana dispensaries." Liquor and marijuana are not the same. Liquor is totally regulated with the amount of alcohol in each bottle by the state government. It is not a hallucinogen. It does not, it is not considered by the FDA or doctors to stimulate the mind in a negative or hallucinogenic way. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, THC is mind-altering, it's a chemical, and it does have hallucinogenic effects. Cannabis is still illegal under federal law. Because of this, commercial marijuana businesses so far have all had to do business in cash because banks are prohibited by the federal government from dealing with this business. Regarding property values, Colorado homes, Colorado has passed the recreational marijuana, homes within one-half of mile of marijuana dispensaries have gotten lower property values compared to other homes in the city. There's also a turn, Mark just talked about the different cities, but what we are not talking about is, there are four or five cities so far in San Mateo County that are adopting an absolute ban on everything but what is allowed by state law. That is the one that Attorney Zaffarano wrote that you have there. That is a temporary ordinance that we want to make permanent. I read it, it is to me lawsuit-proof. No one could challenge this ordinance that he wrote last year that's going to expire in October. It covers everything. So there is a part about outdoor grows also. People are talking to me that they want to do outdoor grows. Kids come by my house every day from the school, people have, I've seen vegetables on their front lawn. Imagine if people grown marijuana. Outdoor grow should be banned. The way Attorney Mark Zaffarano has written the ordinance that you have... The way Attorney Mark Zaffarano has written the ordinance that you have, which is temporary until the next couple of months, it is the most protective of the citizens of this city. Now, yes, I have the research from Colorado. It says that marijuana-related crimes increased 42%. DUIs were up 41%. Remember, there's no test when someone is stopped to check to see if there's marijuana in their system. Marijuana ingestion by children went up 138%, and there was a 400% increase in toddlers ingesting edibles. Marijuana hospitalizations increased 82%. It goes on and on and on. This is a doctor from Mills Peninsula Hospital.
Barbara, if you can start to wind up.
Okay. The doctor from Mills Peninsula Hospital has said about all the problems and that this THC that is in the marijuana, which is what you're talking about, is a hallucinogen, and he named all, it's in the magazine that Mills Peninsula just put up. So I recommend the city council make the current ordinance permanent for the health and safety of the city and not think of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next, please.
Sandra Perez Vargas.
Hello. I'm obviously completely for a dispensary in San Bruno, and the percentages that are thrown out there, like crime has increased 100%, but what are the numbers? Was there one arrest before and two arrests after a dispensary opened? Numbers are very deceiving, and I could speak for myself that when I go to San Francisco, I have never been to a dispensary where there are any issues. They're well-run, so we can learn from San Francisco or any other place, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. The medicinal benefits from cannabis are absolutely amazing. I use it every single day for all the issues that I have medically, and even if it wasn't for that, even if it was just recreational, what's so wrong with it? What's so wrong with a plant being sold in our city? We use mint tea when we have a stomach ache. We use aloe vera to apply to our skin when we have a rash. And it's been around as long as man has, and we've used it in many, many different countries. And anything can be abused. Alcohol is abused, and that seems to be so accepted. There's so many car accidents, so you really can't compare cannabis with alcohol. Alcohol has no medicinal benefits whatsoever. Cannabis does. I give it to my cats when they're ill. It takes care of seizures. It takes care of so many things. So I'm completely behind it. And with San Bruno, when you talk about San Bruno, what do we know about San Bruno? People don't know very much. Why can't we be like this gateway? When you arrive at the San Francisco airport, you go to Rolling Pin Donuts, and if you want, you go to an amazing dispensary. I mean, why not? What's so wrong with that? I would love to see that. When I go anywhere, when I travel, if I'm in Colorado, if I'm in Oregon, off the plane, my first stop is a local dispensary. And it's what I need. It's my medicine. And, I mean, what else can I possibly say? Right now, I was sent a message from a friend, Jim Nickerson, that you might know as San Bruno resident. He is in hospital. He's dying. And what has helped him, more than anything else, medicinal cannabis. And yeah, there's THC. He needed his reality altered from all the pain and the depression. So yeah, bring the THC on. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm new to this process. Dolores Williams, Mastic Avenue. Is that it?
Welcome, Dolores. Welcome, make yourself comfortable.
Okay. I just want to say thank you very much for that presentation. I really learned a lot. I'm here to say that, from a personal experience, I use medical marijuana whenever I need it, which is quite frequently. I'm a college instructor at City College in San Francisco. It's really interesting for me to hear that all marijuana deals with hallucination because I cannot do my lectures in pain. And medical marijuana has enabled me to continue to teach college. I'm just going to say, I couldn't even come here today if I hadn't taken a little medical marijuana because of the pain. So it's really interesting for me to hear people, probably who have never taken it, who haven't had the experience, to come up. It kind of reminds me of the kinds of things that were said about marijuana days gone by, those scary things that they put on television about all these horrible things that can happen to you. Where I'm here to say, nothing horrible has happened to me as a result of taking medical marijuana. In fact, I went to Kaiser Hospital about four or five years ago. I was in so much back pain, and I was begging that they write me a prescription so that I could get medical marijuana. I was trying to do it in what I thought was the appropriate way, and they said no, that they couldn't do it. But, they said they could offer me addicting pain pills. So I did have, I did take some. I took the prescription. I took one. Of course, it wore off after four hours. I had to take another one, and then I knew that that was going to be a problem for me. My husband took me to a clinic where I was able to get the prescription for medical marijuana. And I was able to use that instead of going down the road to addiction with pain pills. And the interesting thing about all of this was the doctor knew I was in a great deal of pain, and she called me and said, "Do you need more pain pills?" Now, I would rather do what I am doing now, which is really, for me, a very gentle process, and which has been very healing for me, which has enabled me to continue my life in a normal fashion, where I can continue to garden, where I continue to clean my house, and do all the normal things that I want to do without being addicted to pain pills. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Next speaker, please.
So I read the entire report. It was very, very well done, very comprehensive. I'm in favor of the city exploring allowing cannabis businesses in the city. The reason that the federal government is, especially Congress, is so against marijuana and cannabis, and has taken the position that they have, frankly, it's because the cannabis business doesn't have millions and millions of dollars in lobbyists flooding Congress, the way that the liquor industry and the tobacco industry does. That's the only reason, and we all know that. I believe that we can put together a series of ordinances that would make sense, that we would have to be very clear in those ordinances to indemnify San Bruno in case of any kind of federal crackdown, because while our president has said he's not going to do anything, you'd never know what he might have tweeted while I'm talking. So, you know, he can change his mind at any second. So we have to be very, very careful about that, but I believe that we could do that, and so that anybody operating in the city would be doing so at their own peril from federal action and would not be able to pass that liability on to San Bruno. Everything else I had to say has already been said by our other speakers. The one, I would, I did agree with only one thing that a previous speaker said, is that we should not do this for tax revenue. We should do this because it is overwhelmingly supported by the city, by the city's residences. And I think if we put an advisory measure on this November's ballot, that would be shown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ryan Mersey.
Ryan Mersey, Keynes Avenue. I would like to say I support the regulation in sale and all of the other activities regarding cannabis in our city at as early a date as possible. I would like to say something a little different. I'd like to talk about testing. I have a close relative who is a medical researcher in South San Francisco, working for, well, he has his own biomedical research firm. And one of the important things that South San Francisco did was allow testing. And those research companies want to be in the 94080 ZIP code, but the price is getting very expensive. Now, there may not be many appropriate areas in San Bruno, but being right next door to 94080 ZIP code might have us get some vacant buildings rented out in appropriate areas if we were allowed testing. And these are major companies that need reliable, that would be reliable. We're talking major medical firms that are now starting to test. If they can expand right next door in a city that is attractive to them, I think we could see a financial benefit to ourselves with greater economic activity. Thank you. That could be done very quickly without the other list. The testing itself could be a separate issue. That'd be a lot of quickly. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello. Thank you for the time. I'm kind of coming out of the green shadows, if you will, to speak up here right now, and I work for a dispensary in San Francisco. And this is after a long thought about going to work for a dispensary, because I was, I went back to school at Skyline College to get into solar, and I worked for SolarCity, and I said, "Well, there's a lot going on," and some of those businesses took a downturn while cannabis is taking upturn. So it's pretty interesting, and I had to make a decision, and some people that I know here are probably going, "You're selling pot, Jose?" But anyway, I do it for a living. It's, what I could tell you is I've got off Vicodin, and I used to take Vicodin. The VA used to give me Vicodin for a very long time, and I finally got off Vicodin and started using medical marijuana. And I have to go all the way to San Francisco or somewhere to get it. And like you were saying with testing and other things, obviously, people want to get quality products, and it's a serious business, and there's, as you mentioned, Prop 64 and all the things that you've mentioned, we're all moving in that direction. So at some point, hopefully, San Bruno will get on board with it. I'm not going to get rich doing what I do right now, working for a dispensary, but at this point, you know, other businesses, like I said, they're, it's shaky. So I would say that San Bruno would benefit from having patients or people that recreationally want to use it here locally without having to go jump in, for me, jump on public transportation or something to go and get what you need. So Walgreens, you know, might get in the business. I don't know. I mean, it's one of these things where it's obvious a serious thing, and there's a lot of deadlines and dates. Testing, I know, is obviously very important because you cannot sell product that is not tested or licensed, and this is the quagmire, if you will, that's happening right now with product distribution and people trying to get licensed and people that are not licensed. So the answer is obviously everybody should get on board. Whether the city's, you know, ready to do that, I have no idea, but obviously, it's a positive medicine. I got off opioids, and I know a lot of people that are doing that from what I read, and again, that's just what I read. But if you talk to people, they will, might tell you the same thing. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm being told that that's all the speaker cards. Is there anybody else in the audience that did not turn in a speaker card that wanted to speak on this topic? Okay, let's turn it to the council. I'm sorry. Alex.
Sorry, super last minute.
You could just come and talk, Alex. But thank you.
Alex Melendrez, 140 Portola Way, San Bruno. I'm here as a private citizen, not representing any group or individual other than myself. I'm in favor of the cannabis industry in San Bruno. I too have had family members who have been able to come off of addicting medications through the use of medical cannabis, although I support it both medically and recreationally. I am more in favor of majority opinion either way from our San Bruno voters. I'm more here to discuss possible locations if the city so chooses to move forward on this issue. I think a good primary location could be near the industrial areas, near Montgomery and the northern parts of San Mateo Avenue. This would be away from most schools and our main commercial centers, while also significantly close to our police station. Alternatively, Sneetland could be a location between San Bruno and 280 near the VA. However, these locations would all be dependent on the availability of space and possibly rezoning. Everything else has pretty much been said. I'd like to thank the esteemed city council and staff for their time, especially Mark Zaffarano for his very comprehensive report, and yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. So there are no more speakers or speaker cards, so we'll bring it back to council. And council, any comments? This is, again, not an action item, but a direction to staff on, as we've been told, the comprehensive report that Mr. Zaffarano has given us. Irene.
If possible, I'd like to hear from our police chief on his thoughts about all this.
Sure. Did you turn in a speaker's card? Chief of Police Ed Barberini.
Good evening again. As a matter of practice, as a police chief serving in a municipality, I don't usually or normally offer opinions regarding policy, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions or concerns you may have about any direction that you're considering.
Through the chair. Part of the report that Mark sent to all of us, and that's available to the public, had to do with the increase in criminal activity in Colorado regarding, in relationship to the use of recreational marijuana and near dispensaries. So I didn't know if you had heard from, anecdotally, from other cities, other police chiefs, incidences that may give us some insight about all of that, or, and/or if, what, if we either go all out or do part of some of this. One of the other comments that was also in the report was regarding staffing up, basically, to handle any incidences that might occur or to regulate, to go out and do enforcement. So I was wondering if you had any comments about that.
Sure. So we, in the law enforcement environment, we've heard the same information from the Colorado experience, and pretty directly, and we believe it to be pretty accurate. There, from a public safety perspective and from a safety-only perspective, our concerns obviously are the effects of how people behave when they're using marijuana or any other drug. And a big part of that is driving. And right now, we're in a kind of a difficult position where driving under the influence of marijuana is a big deal, unfortunately, just like driving under the influence of alcohol is. However, driving under the influence of alcohol is a little bit more clear-cut because we can measure the level of alcohol in a person's system at any given time. Marijuana, while we can articulate that there is marijuana in somebody's system, it's more difficult to determine what level that is or whether or not they're under the influence. As far as staffing, that's probably my biggest concern, as we've just gone through a lengthy budget process, and I think we've made it abundantly clear from a police department perspective that we're spread as thin as we can probably be at this point. There are other areas where we're tasked with doing some regulation or licensing work. That includes our card room and massage parlors. That includes our card room and massage parlors. And to be frank, that, that, that takes a lot of work. And, and I would anticipate that depending on the route, that if the council chooses to, to jump into this arena, depending on the, the nature of what the city chooses to do, it's going to create some, some work on our end that probably could not be done, done or completed adequately with existing staff. So I would anticipate that there'd be some demands on the police department, along with probably two or three other city agencies at the very least, where we don't have the staff to do that now. So I would imagine that we would have to look at somehow doing something to, to, to increase that. The other, and, and this is not my area of expertise, but the other discussions that are, that are, that take place in the law enforcement environment, because we don't, like, most people would believe that we have a hard line, yea or nay, and the opinions within our, our business are, are, are pretty all over the map, as opposed to us all being in, in the one line. The one thing that we have difficulty is we don't have that one example where there was a windfall from, from jumping into the marijuana business, where from a public safety perspective, we could see, hey, there was, there was a tremendous amount of revenue that either offset or made our lives easier from a, from, from that perspective. So those are the types of conversations that are being had. Not, not, not an opinion, not advocating either way, just some of the considerations that are being talked about within the law enforcement circles.
Thank you.
Why the chief's up, council, is there any other questions of the chief? No? Thank you, chief. Any comments or question from council? Laura?
I'll go first tonight. This is a tough decision. I would say that, for me personally, I, I don't support the use of marijuana. I understand that there's a need for medicinal purposes, and I understand that wholeheartedly. I remember going through chemo treatments and other patients in the same center who needed it to get through because of the nausea and things like that. And I feel that that's, you know, something that needs to be supported through doctors, through prescriptions, through the, the appropriate locations to support medical marijuana. I also feel that our society has an epidemic when it comes to addiction, and that the use of marijuana is a gateway to other drugs. I have an unfortunate personal experience with a relative, and the first thing you'll learn about going to any class and any is that you need to be alcohol, marijuana, drugs free in order to, to rid your, your addictions. And it's a very, very scary world. We have a close family, a close friend who lost her son this year. Marijuana, she used to start it in high school. It's, it's becoming an epidemic with the younger kids because of depression. It's so readily available. I remember asking my son in high school, when he was a freshman, and this goes back 12 years ago, I said to him, eight years, 10 years ago, I said to him, how easily available and readily can you get it? You want it within the next half hour? And that was then. And today, I guarantee you, I can go on to an app and have it delivered to my home. I could drive up to a location in the city and, and get it pretty quickly. So it's out there. To bring it into our city, I have a hard time with that right now. I have a hard time with that right now, because it's, it's an unknown. I mean, from a city standpoint, we don't, we cannot afford additional police officers on the street. We can't afford additional crime in, in the streets, and we know that it'll come. It's just a fact. Marijuana and the drugs will bring in more people, and there will potentially be additional crime caused that. And the other thing I think is really important is I will never make a decision up here that's going to be based on taxes. I'm not here to say that, let's do it because it's going to increase our taxes. I would say, let's do it because it's the right thing, and it's the only way residents in San Bruno can get marijuana for medicinal purposes. And that's why I would support it. But I'm not going to support it as a recreational drug. I think we have a problem with that. And I think there are too many kids who easily can get it, and it continues on in life. And that, that sort of steamrolls to other issues within society. And that's my stance.
Other comments or questions from council? Mayor? Marty? I'm sorry. Can't see your...
Sorry. I have a young son. He's going to be six in August. And I compare the city I want for him and the upbringing I had, where I had to make choices in my life. And yeah, back in those days, you could still get it in an hour. You'd have to, you know, ride your bike over to somebody's house, and somebody's brother had it, or somebody. But so it, this is a, this is a personally a difficult decision for me. The idea is, does San Bruno want to be a city that has a dispensary? Well, some people over here are saying yes, and some people that written me have said no. That ultimate decision should rely, should be based on the people who vote. But tonight, we're, 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 we're trying to get down this path. And so I, I personally believe that the research is fine, to, to do those type of businesses in, in San Bruno is okay. It gets down to primarily on the dispensary. Does San Bruno, do the, do the voters of San Bruno want a dispensary? We know the voters of California wanted to legalize recreational marijuana. We know that the majority of, what was 57% of San Bruno, 60%? Okay, thanks. They wanted it legal recreational, but that wasn't a vote saying, I want it in my town, right? It's a different question. So ultimately, that decision should be made, I think, by the public. And getting, getting to determine all the specific rules and where it'll be zoned to be. I personally don't want it in our face. I think we can find a place for it other than our downtown. I don't want it seen in our downtown. I think we, we, we don't need that. You know, we already got enough stuff down there. So I would, I would like to see staff pursue investigating it more. I, it was, this is something that we should be looking at having, having another meeting. This was a small sample of our community. You know, there's... So the one question I have for, for our city attorney, or I guess it could have been, well, we'll let him give it a shot first, but the idea of banning indoor, or I'm sorry, outdoor, if you ban it, then you do not get any of the funding, it says in the report. And that doesn't seem like a good idea to me, to, to try to regulate what people are doing inside their houses. It's inside their house, you know? It's your castle. I don't want anybody, any city people going in there, hey, you got seven plants, or you got six, or you got five, whatever. I, I don't, I prefer that people don't grow it outside, but that's what, where how plants grow. They, they want to, they want to grow in the sun. So I, I'm not in favor of banning that. I'm not in, I'm not in favor of regulating that. I think, I think that's something that we can talk about, and I could get some more input on. So I think I've talked enough. I think I would like to see, got two more council members, or actually, I'm not sure, yeah, four more that I haven't heard their comments yet. So I'm looking forward to those.
I think the vice mayor was, was clear, but Michael, you were next.
Well, I, I agree with both of my colleagues that have spoken. I really, really liked what you said, Vice Mayor Davis. I think we do have a problem, and, and as a parent, I, I do worry about kids and the kind of message that we're sending them. I mean, grownups, adults, can make adult decisions about what they put in their bodies, and they're very well capable of handling that. But, you know, anyone under 20 years of age, they, you know, their, their brains are less developed, and they're more prone to addiction. And I think putting a, a message out there that we, as a city, think that it's okay, we have the same problem with, with alcohol and with cigarettes and all these other things. We're trying to keep them out of the kids' hands. It's, it's difficult. And, you know, I try to set a good example for my kids, but, you know, there, there's a lot of peer pressure, there's a lot of influence, and, you know, and, you know, quite frankly, the, the drugs that are supposedly legal are causing big issues as well. And I wish we could do something about that, but that's definitely out of our hands. You know, as, as Marty said, you know, he's, he's got a, a young boy at home, and he's going to grow up in this city, and he's concerned about what kind of environment is, is there for him. So, you know, at this point, I, I really don't see us wanting to be at the forefront of this. Something that the city attorney said is that, you know, if, if we keep this action with the council, and I, I really think that we do need to keep the action with the council and not try to push it off on the voters to make a decision, because attitudes are going to change. We're going to have more data as we move forward. I, I think, at this point, we probably don't want to take the step of, you know, accepting the, the responsibility and authorizing any kind of, of activity. But I don't want to say that, you know, that might not be the case in a couple of years. You know, the rest of the country is, is changing attitudes. The federal government may, at some point, change their mind, and, you know, at, at that time, then we can revisit it. We, we've got our neighboring communities that are, that are, some of them are stepping in, some of them are staying out of it. So I would definitely like to see what their experience is a few years down the road. You know, the county's only recently taken action. So I would like to see what their experience is going to be with, with the cultivation here in San Mateo County. That's definitely new for us. And so a lot of data to still be, to, to still be gathered. And, you know, if, if we do ever get to the point where we do want to try to regulate it, then, you know, a large portion of that, that regulation effort really needs to be about keeping it out of the hands of, of minors. I know even when only medical marijuana was, was being allowed, it really wasn't hard to get a card that would allow you to go in and buy it. And I think you only had to be 18 to go in there and, and get it. And I just don't think it was being regulated properly. So if I'm hearing from staff that it's going to, you know, take a lot of effort to get us to a place where we can do a good job of regulating it, then I'm hesitant to step into that arena. Thank you. Irene, any other comments?
It's, it is difficult to, to figure all this out. On the one hand, it's readily available. I have three kids that could, well, I'm not so much anymore, they're older, but when they were in high school, could have told you, oh, sure, so-and-so and so-and-so, and down the street, and whatever. So in one essence, we're trying to keep it away from kids who know more about it than we do. And on the other hand, we're trying to figure out who should be able to do what. I, I've been, I was looking at this chart and trying to figure out what it, what could we do that would help people who need, who need it for pain, or for every, the other different medical conditions they have, without putting it out there, without making it so available. So Mark, one of these things that's here says, medical delivery only. So am I, am I correct in assuming that that means a person can have it delivered to their home for, if they have a medical reason to do that? Is that what that means in practical terms?
Yes, partially. So that, that's a good question. So normally, delivery would be delivery of any cannabis products. I don't know how you could regulate whether the delivery to any particular person is a delivery for, for a medical reason, because you're, you're obviously not going to have anybody going with the delivery person to check their, their medical ID card. So I, I guess I would say that from a regulatory standpoint, delivery is delivery, and I, I don't know of any cities that have tried to make that distinction. I do know that cities that have tried to tax deliveries have had a difficult time implementing a system that, that does that, because it's, it's very difficult to, to do that. And there is a bill right now in the state legislature that would allow non-licenses, that is, people who are not licensed by the state, to deliver. And so that would mean anybody can deliver the, the product to, to anyone. So that, those are the difficulties with, with the delivery model, although some cities, as you've seen, do allow delivery. And, and I guess they're trying to tax it.
Yeah, I was, the, some of them allow medical delivery, and some, like Portola Valley allows medical medicinal delivery, but not recreational delivery. But how do you regulate delivery anyway? I mean, it, it's, you can go online and, and order some with your credit card and get it in two days. And how do we, as a city, regulate that?
Yeah, that, that would, I guess I would say, that would be a difficult task. I think we, we know how difficult it is to regulate Lyft, to regulate Uber, to regulate Lime Bike, to regulate people that, that leave things around, to regulate Parway.com when these are on, online platforms. I, I think it would be a challenge to regulate the delivery of a product to an individual's home.
So, so basically, us saying no deliveries allowed isn't going to affect anyone's, and especially if anyone needs it for medicinal purposes. So, so what I, what I'm getting at is we're not denying anyone who is in pain, medical marijuana to relieve that pain, because they can, I mean, we're, they can get it anyway.
Well, right. I guess the important thing to note is that neither the moratoriums that the city has passed, nor any of the other prohibitions prohibit people from either obtaining or, or using marijuana for, for any purpose. What those do is it, it prohibits facilities, commercial facilities, from being established in the city. So those individuals, then, if they want to get marijuana products, they need to go somewhere else in order to get those products. Or, as you said, have it delivered to their home with, without the city being able to either know or regulate that.
Okay. So then, then also about the indoor plant cultivation and planting. Again, anybody can grow, legally grow up to six plants. And nobody's, part of, part of my kind of fumbling around with this is, I don't want to advocate it, I don't want to put it out there, I don't want to encourage it, but on the other hand, I understand people who need it. So I was searching for a way to, to satisfy both. But we're really not denying anyone access to medical marijuana or any kind of marijuana. We're only really trying to deny or think about regulating or denying or prohibiting a business coming in and doing it.
That's correct.
So, okay. So just to be clear on that, since that is the case, I'm for not having it at all, for banning it. And if we are banning all the businesses related to it for many reasons. So if, if, if three of us say that, that's what you all will do, or bring, bring that back. And then any future, in the future, if things change, that can also change.
So just to clarify, right, if the city council were to direct staff this evening, we would, to, to do that, to, to come up with an ordinance that's similar to our moratorium to ban commercial marijuana facilities in the city of San Bruno, we would come back with that ordinance at a subsequent meeting. And for introduction, that would be obviously an open... an open public meeting and then it would be for adoption. And it would go into effect 30, within 30 days of, of adoption.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so my two cents, and I will say I agree with my colleagues on a variety of what they've said. Concerns is that some action, if it was going to be regulated or allowed, whatever it was, has to be done by September 25th prior to the October 25th expiration. If we take no action and October 25th comes on October 26th, then somebody can go down to City Hall, can apply and go through the process because it is allowed within the state. What happens if that happens? And then all of a sudden, come February, March of the next year, everybody comes down and says, "That was a bad idea. Can we just pull the plug?" And then everything goes away and goes back to normal? Or is the, I'm going to say the answer is no, but am I...
So under state zoning law, once you allow a use in a particular zoning district because you didn't either prohibit or regulate it, then that use becomes what's called a, a pre-existing use. And so if you were to decide later after the use is established that you want to change the use and prohibit it, you wouldn't be able to do that for a pre-existing use that has become what they, they say is non-conforming. So, and there are many examples of that in the city. For example, you might have a, a certain kind of business somewhere, the city rezones and so now that business is no longer allowed. You can't kick the business out. They, they get to stay there as long as they're operating and the city has certain rules about, about that. If they discontinue for six months and so on and so forth, then, then we can say that you can't operate the business anymore. But for the most part, the, the individual would have a right to conduct, continue conducting that business even if the public or the city council changed their minds and decided that to, to prohibit those kinds of businesses. You could prohibit future ones, but you couldn't stop the ones that are already there.
Okay. And also, as we can, as others have, you can ban it and then reopen it. So to me, what I see in the short term is that we need to have an ordinance come back that bans it. So I cannot believe that we're going to have enough time for everybody to get together on what should be established and how it should be done on September 25th. We're going to have an agenda item that talks about having one meeting in August, so I just don't see how feasibly that's going to get done. So obviously, I think city, the city of San Bruno wants to maintain control, so I would think that's the first thing that needs to be done. I believe that one thing as far as the testing aspect, that is something that I would want to maybe look at and maybe even be, maybe open to that. As far as storefronts and other things, I think that needs to be banned at this time. It can certainly be brought back again. You can undo that quickly, but if we go past the October 25th deadline, then you can't once that process starts. And we found that with the in-law units, right? That started happening. The applications came in and we said that was too big, we wanted it smaller, but you can't stop it once it started. And I, and I agree with the vice mayor. As long as, I've lived here my whole life and what I believe and what I say and what I do is not going to ever be about money. That's not what the city is about, that's not what I'm about, and that's not how I was raised. It's about what's best for the entire community, all of it. And so I'm not going to be rushed into judgment by September 25th to set some policy and structure in place to meet that deadline. So I think that's what needs to come back is a ordinance for the banning so we can continue it and not go past the October 25th deadline, understanding that we can look into other aspects. Irene brought up about deliveries, but we understood that was a little, it's complicated. We heard about testing and I don't know that I had heard others, but other than opening up another dialogue or suggestion. It's also about the taxes. The great value that I keep hearing when I, you know, we talk about that is you can't do anything until 2019 in November. So there's all the, that you should do it only because of the money. Well, that's not going to be viable until it can get on the ballot to the vote of the people because of Prop 218. So that's my two cents. So staff needs direction from counsel. What, what am I, I'm somewhat hearing to bring back, now correct me please, counsel, I know you will, that to bring back an ordinance that continues on a ban basis so that we don't go past the October 25th deadline? Is that correct or am I wrong?
That's correct. I would agree with that.
Michael?
Yes.
Marty?
That is, what's the question?
Sorry. I know it's late. An ordinance come back to ban it permanently so we don't go past the October 25th deadline? Because we can certainly reverse it after said point, but once it's, once we expire, we expire.
And we're banning also the testing? Everything?
Everything's banned at this time, but my suggestion was just getting more information on the testing aspect.
Okay. Do you have a schedule of amount of time, estimate how long it takes to bring something back?
On the banning or on the testing?
I'm sorry. On the...
For the testing. That's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. We'll need to do some research. We didn't specifically look at all of the different, different license types. It was an interesting comment that Mr. Mersny made about, about that and others made. We'll need to look into that and, and we'll let you know. It will likely not be before October.
Right.
We will bring back, is what I'm hearing, the, the permanent ordinance back before October to do that. And we'll likely come back following with, with additional information if the council desires.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of banning it entirely. I mean, at some point, I totally understand your point. We get to, how can we really regulate it without knowing everything still? But when are we going to start doing, I guess we're going to wait until other cities kind of figure it out for us? Kind of, I guess that's, that's being drawn out, like, so...
Unless there's something else that you're asking staff other than testing, that's what I'm trying to understand.
When we're, when we're, we're going to ban outdoor? And if we ban outdoor, then we can't get any of the funding for...
So, so, so I think that the state law is that if you impose a ban, whether it's on outdoor cultivation or otherwise, you're not eligible for grant funding that the state believes they are going to make, but that cities are not guaranteed to receive. So that's, that's how that works. And I, there's a lot of information about that, but there, I think the bottom line is there are no guarantees of any grant funding. And then even if there were grant funding, it goes to specific purposes and we haven't evaluated what, what those would be and whether the city would need them and we, we just don't know anything about that, or whether we would even be eligible for those things. But if you do impose a ban, the, the state says you don't get any grant funding or the opportunity for grant funding.
Chair?
Yes.
Regarding that specifically, that is something I think we should look at a little closer as, as some future step because if, if there is a potential to have access to some funds that could help us with bigger issues related to addiction and prevention and, and all these other things that, that I would like us to address, then maybe I would want to have some discussion around that and then what are, what are the other cities doing? And by then, we might have a better idea of what the potential grant schemes could look like.
We'll definitely look into that as well as the testing issue. And really, as soon as we can get some information, I just don't know how, how long that'll be, but we'll bring it back to you as soon as we have something.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? So I'm not, unless I'm stopped, I'm hearing consensus or unless I'm not testing, potential of the outdoor with grant as far as looking into that, as far as the rest, to bring back an ordinance to ban.
And to be clear...
Yes, please.
The, the ordinance that would come back would replicate exactly the, the moratorium that we have right now.
Correct. That's right. Yes, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
You have direction.